Agenda changes. A couple. We will postpone discussion of Policy 755-2, Student Gender Identity, until our next meeting. And then there are additions to 14 under New Business, 14 DE and AL. Motion to accept the resignation that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education for the Truementsburg Central School District hereby accepts the resignation as presented for Betty Jean Smith, our custodian, retirement after 20 years of service to the district. Discussion?
She'll be missed. What a great woman.
Yeah, she's a great lady. Always, you know, she's always got a joke out there to crack you up, crack a smile or a comment, so I always look forward to that. So, thank you, Betty Jean.
She set up for tonight's meeting. I saw her on Saturday night when the Girl Scouts were here to do a movie. I mean, she is here for everything and sets up for everything and she knows where everything is and always knows what needs to be done to make sure that events go off without a hitch. She is always here and always doing so much for our kids, so very much appreciated.
If you've ever had anything going on over the weekend, she is invaluable because, as John said, she is always here, she does know where everything is, and she's always so willing to help you out.
So maybe we shouldn't accept her resignation?
Well, we should.
It chooses them.
Those in favor? Opposed? extends, motion carries. We wish her the very best. Presentations. Lauren?
How are we? Well, we're getting closer. We're going to update tonight with a couple more departmental budgets. We're still in the process of combing through and looking for changes. We're still in the process of waiting for the PowerPoint to come up.
Doesn't look like it.
F eight? Supposed to be up there? Is there?
It's the bulb heating up. Give me to kick off a couple of lights.
Yeah, that'd be good. Be a little bit easier to see. Thank you, Ken. We sent out a preliminary draft the other day. You received an update tonight. There were some changes. Again, it's a work in progress, and until we present a final draft in another month, over a month, we're going to continue to make changes and get updates and more information and better information. So, any questions, comments, whatever, just, you know, feel free to interrupt me. Is it easier to do it that way if there's something up?
Sure. However, it's best for you.
Or just don't ask any questions.
Oh, sorry.
Tax cap is still at 2.77. That's not going to change. That is our cap. It's a given. If you want to exceed the cap, you're certainly welcome to try. It requires a supermajority vote by the public if you want to go over a 2.77 percent increase. State aid, the governor's proposals came out pretty close to what I had estimated, a little hair more. State is still in negotiations. I do have an article, if anyone's interested in reading it, that came out. The expectation, the headline is "School Aid Prediction Up From Cuomo's Proposal Less Than This Year's Amount." So what they're expecting is that what he's put in the budget will go up, but not as much as we got this year. So, anywhere in between, you know, if we can pick up an extra percentage would be nice. I'm not sure if it's going to land in the pockets of the highest need districts, which has been a focus again, and certainly they do need the money. We would like it as well. So we don't know how that's going to be divvied up across the state or amongst districts as yet. So as an overview of the revenue streams, our property taxes rounded up, will go up 2.8 percent, $300,000 increase. State aid is now in at 237. I think we estimated 230. Local revenues are up a little bit. Federal aid, we're expecting a little more Medicaid revenues coming in. We talked last time about the debt service, about having money coming in from debt service and applying some monies from the unemployment reserve and applying, again, some of the retirement reserve to cover some of the expenditures on the other side of the fence. At this point in time to match the budget numbers, we're looking at applying $627,000 in fund balance. So what that means is we applied 245 less to this year if we're not going to spend it, which I don't believe we're going to need that. And hopefully we can garner more. I'm looking at maybe a total of 500 at this point in time. If we don't get any more state aid, that 500 plus another $127,000 will be needed to balance this budget. So there's several moving pieces. A, we haven't finished scrubbing the expenses, so those may still adjust for better or worse. BOC's numbers have to come in. We're working on estimate right now. They haven't priced out their services, so we're working on estimates of their services. And estimates of special education, where the students may fall, and estimates on other in other areas, we're still combing through. So this is just a snapshot for right now.
Will you walk us through the debt service one more time? This is a transfer through, this is eventually going to end up?
Yes, this comes from debt service into the general fund, from the general fund to the capital reserve.
Okay. So that's really just a wash?
So that's a wash. So it skews the percentage of increase.
Right.
But it's not a, it's not a, it's just a movement of funds. But we have to show it.
And then on the retirement, that is really going to offset expenses for next year that will be continuing expenses in future years as opposed to the capital project, correct?
Correct. So whether or not we really need that or not, again, depends on how everything else fits. If we can tighten other areas of the budget, by the end of next year, we may or may not have to use all of those funds. And also, we have almost close to $2 million in that reserve.
That was my next question.
So, we do have it available. And also, what you're going to see, not only next month when we come forward with the final proposed budget, will be an outline of the reserves and where we are, it's also going to be required to be sent out to the taxpayers. So when we report the tax lobby and all the increases and the expected amounts, they are also, a new requirement is to list all the reserves and our expected application of those reserves. So they're looking for those numbers. So we'll be presenting that in those documents when they go out to the public.
So quick, Matt, if we were continuing to pull from this reserve at the rate we are projecting for next year, we're still good for 10 years in this?
Well, approximately.
Or approximately?
Five, six.
Okay.
Five or six.
And that's, just to clarify, is the employee retirement reserved only? So that offsets only that expense, not the teacher's retirement?
We're not allowed to say that for the teacher's retirement or for health insurance, for retirees.
Do you mind verbally repackaging the 156.3 increase? Just to, seems like.
Repackaging? Oh, the applied fund balance. It's not quite doubled. So, actually, that plus the 245 plus another 50 percent. So what we have is we are applying $245,000 this year in the 16, in the 17, 18 budget. Looking forward to balance 18, 19, the figure goes up to 627 to be able to match the expenditure line. So if you're talking about, so it's actually a $382,000 increase, which is one and a half times the 245. Is that, but you want an explanation of what the fund, applied fund balance is?
I guess I would just be concerned that that becomes a pattern?
Oh, yeah.
Or maybe there is no reason for concern, but it's.
I understand that it is a reason for concern because certainly you don't want to go down that path of having too high of a fund balance applied. So the caveat is that if we get more state aid, that number goes down, 1 more percent in the state aid.
But also, Lauren, not to interrupt, but as you've already explained, the debt service is a one-time, this is to offset the capital project. So that's really inflating that number?
The debt service is part of that?
Yeah.
Okay. That answers my question.
Isn't that one or not?
Well, it's part of the reserves. It's separate. So it does sound like a high number. So that's something that we're going to work at. It's not something that I want to finalize this with, looking for something lesser. But again, we're going to be looking at the other sources of revenue, we're going to be waiting for state aid numbers to come in. Maybe the BOC's numbers will come in lower and our tuition rates will be lower. So those are the types of things that, over the next month, if that doesn't lower, we have to make the decision. Is that too high? And if it is, perhaps we have to make changes on the expense side. And those are decisions that have to be addressed. So I don't disagree with you. From the expenditure side, salaries and wages are up 6.8 percent. That's a combination of a few things. It's bringing in more personal, higher overtime in place of hiring outside contractors, which can offset. It's our contractual increases that have been agreed to under the union contracts and settlements. It's a couple of new positions which we'll talk about moving forward. So all of that is rolled into that $725,000 increase at this point in time. And there's a little bit of extra in there because we're still unsure as to whether or not we're going to need, I would rather give bad news and then make it better as opposed to good news and have it get worse. So that's got a little bit of extra in it in case we need additional special education services or it's personnel. But this includes extra overtime as well as contractual settlements and subcosts. Our subcosts are very high right now because we have a number of, unfortunately, leaves of absence that we have to fill for. So that contributes to that as well. And benefits are up. We spoke previously. BOC's charges are up, A for 3 percent increase plus different services that we're needing along the way.
Is benefits limited to health benefits?
No. Health is TRS, teachers' retirement, employees' retirement, social security, health, dental, and I think those are the ones that increased. Unemployment, oh, and working's comp come up significantly. Debt service went down, and then, of course, the whole issue of transferring to the capital reserve is a big bump, one-time bump that we're, that we see. Let's check. So what we're going to look at now, very briefly, and I can stop if you want, I don't want to belabor too much, that we're talking, we have included in this draft two new positions, one a library media specialist, so that we have a full-time librarian in both the middle school and the high school instead of a split position, and switching out a partial BOC's position where we have one four days a week to a full-time position and then trading off the BOC's services.
How long have we been without a full-time librarian in the middle school?
Two, Jeannie's not here, two years?
It's 2013.
Yeah. Wow.
Yeah. I know somebody who works in the library. And that's why our position changed.
Can you just walk us through how that was determined to be the top priority or one of the top priorities?
It's unfortunate that Josh is not here. Lauren, it's Jeannie to speak to that.
Oh, if you want me, I'll hold the question until next time we meet.
Yeah, I think we've definitely identified needs, including the computer science for all needing to be implemented within our building. I would rather wait for Josh and Jeannie to speak to that specifically.
Instead of getting specific like that, could you, we get a review about how needs are identified during the budget? We, I feel like we go over it every year, but I think it's important to just talk about how needs are identified for the budget as far as that process.
Absolutely.
We've evolved and all that stuff.
Do you want us to bring that back the next time or you want us to?
If you're, it's fine either way.
So I can just shed some light on it right now. So each year, Lauren or me, whoever's in that position, we have individual meetings with all of our administrative team to talk about their department and department needs. They have done the labor before that to me, so hopefully John is an example. He speaks to the individuals within his building. Maybe the science department have identified that with STEM they have some greater expenses in terms of supplies or equipment. And then John would bring that to this year, Lauren, and say, these are some of the increases that we believe we need. Then holistically, the administrative team meets numerous times and we just use, everybody throw everything in the center of the table, nothing's too wild. Let's dream. If we could better our district, what would that require? And so we sort of have that dream list until we start getting some of the numbers from the state, and then we start chipping away at that list and we prioritize all along. But at first, everything just sounds so great that we could do to improve our programs. But then secondhand, we come back to reality and say, okay, if we have to chip away at this, what do we, how do we prioritize this list? And definitely, the media specialist has come to the top, not just this year, but also last year. So I think that's really a preference on the part of all three buildings in delivering curriculum program to our students. That's just one example.
This is an overview by just general categories departmentally as opposed to categorically for, you know, object codes. General education and special education, we have increases. We have significant increases in special education due to the needs and the higher tuition rates, the more, the higher BOC's services. So, you know, we definitely will be looking at again and again and again, and there's a little bit more extra in there, in this budget proposal at this point in time because we don't want to be caught too short if, you know, we have got an influx of students. This year was a very tight year in terms of student influx. So we had to pay some higher tuition fees and ask BOC's for some additional services. Curriculum and professional development, we'll look at, again, all of these we're going to look at in more detail and explain the differences. This is overview of the differences in terms of general education, the same categories. But I'm going to break this down even further for you, or we're going to take it like a little more breakdown, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through that. General education, basically, BOC's services adjust based on our needs in terms of which classes or which programs that we're applying for under the coasters, and those tuition rates and those numbers of students in each of those programs affects how much we're going to be paying for BOC's services this year. So right now, this is where we are. Again, all of these are subject to change. In the equipment and purchases, we had built in some extra money for STEM purchases this year. So we have kept our other expenses fairly flat, but taken out some of the bump that we had built in for purchasing some of the STEM equipment. And some reorganization of supply and material lines that also came out because we also planned for furniture, classrooms, some changes along the line. So those we are not duplicating next year, so that's the decrease. Special education, again, BOC's services is going up considerably, contracts for tuition, the rates going out to the private schools, and then, of course, our pay increases and some additional money in there for, what if, for special education at this point. Technology and library, we had built in extra monies into this year. Did I go too fast? Do you want me to go back? Okay. I don't want, if I'm wrong, just stop me.
You were just growing.
We had built in additional monies in this year's budget. Unfortunately, I had to pull some of that to cover some of the special education costs. So at this point in time, what we're spending this year is being carried over to next year even though, so we bumped it up and now we're kind of leveling it off. This technology piece, I'm hoping that as we scrub through the numbers over the next month, we put some more in. We have a couple of options in terms of renewing our servers and some of our access points and the wiring, but it's all being done in conjunction with the construction project and the smart bonds project. So we may, if we can pick pieces that we can add to or include in the budget as we move forward. So we're not eliminating anything that we have right now. We're still pertaining with all the licensing, the equipment rentals and the leases. We may end up having to add a little more because we do have some needs for the servers. So we're continuing to examine those alternatives and hopefully come up with maybe little cost savings and get some better technology into the schools. The media specialist.
Lauren, can I just interrupt? So am I understanding you correctly when you say that some of our technology needs are being picked up either in the capital project or through smart bonds money and that this doesn't necessarily represent a true decrease in the overall amount of money that we're spending?
True.
Okay.
True. Like to spend a little bit more, but at this point in time, yes.
Yeah, but also the technology.
Yeah. I kind of robbed a little bit away from Michael without knowing about it early in the year, but, you know, working to give it back to him as we go.
That's why we have public meetings, so he can find these things out.
That's right. But I'm sure that he can spend another $100,000 over and above just in getting manpower into the district. I mean, that's obviously in need as well. So what we're going to be doing over the next couple of weeks as well is just, you know, how can we best balance capital projects, smart bonds, what's our current need, what can we do right now? And that's where all that is going to, you're going to see changes, I'm sure. The media specialist is the position we're asking for. And BOC's services, and really that's just the amount of money that we had built into the budget and didn't spend yet, so we're keeping what we spent flat at this point in time. So budget to budget, it's down, but I'm not taking any more money away from it. And then miscellaneous change in supplies. Curriculum development, if we make the director of curriculum a full-time position and then reduce what was budgeted or part of that position in this current year, and then we took some of the conference and travel away from the school buildings and put it as a central, central budget line so that the curriculum director can then control which conferences and professional development are going to be dealt at. So it just brings that money into a different place. It's not new money. And giving her some money for supplies. Support services, this is basically just a lighting position that was, that needed to be realigned and minor changes in BOC's lines and supplies, not big dollars here. If we look at the non-instructional facilities, transportation, the administrative piece I put back in, civic activities is our adult program. Again, our benefits, debt service accounts are reiterated here. We're going to take a look at facilities and transportation. The rest of them are falling fairly close to what we had predicted or talked about in prior meetings. I'm going to skip that, skip through the explanations and just look at the major changes in the facilities budget. At this point in time, we increased, I increased overtime and salaries. A, we have increases in contractual salaries, but we've also used a lot of overtime and extra work or extra labor to fill in or temporary. It also includes substitutes. So we have changeovers in personnel. We've been trying to get some projects off the ground, so having our staff work the extra hours is less expensive than hiring outside contractors to come in and do some of the work. You know, with the concession stand, we're working to finish up. The electrical Joe's here, right? Saying this right? So it's cheaper for our guys to come in, do the work than to hire outside. If we couldn't do it with our inside labor, then we would go outside, obviously. But they've been doing quite well there. And because we had some projects this year that we're not going to have next year, so we've, it's, I'm not taking away his operating supplies or he's not going to decrease his services, it's just that some of the projects that he's been able to take care of this year are not continuing. So we're not cutting him back. We're not taking the oil out of the trucks, really. Transportation, minor adjustments. Basically, we had built into this year's budget retro payments that were paid in last year. So it gave us some margin in this year's budget, but also we don't need it for next year's budget. We've paid the retros out, those are all settled and taken care of. So as we move salaries forward, we have contractual increases, but we don't have the retro. So that's why the salaries are pretty flat in the transportation area at this, at this Any other question? Any questions? Do you want me to back up?
Well, just one slide. I just, you have, non-instructional, you have something called civic activities. I just, I've never seen it like that. I don't know what you mean by that.
Oh, that's your adult education classes. That's considered, it's not K-12, it's the adult ed that we run after school or at nights. I don't know the specific programs, but we have revenue that comes in for the fees and we have it kind of churned out for the teachers.
So that, even though that's showing an increase of 5,300, that would be offset by the revenue that would come in? So it's not really an increase, but so that includes drivers ed, the zumba, the volleyball, there's a flag that goes out typically in August, I think, if you're going.
Does that mean there's increased programming that's going to happen?
So the expenses of that program are offset by the participation fees? So either participation fees are going up because we're obligated to pay the instructors more could be a reason for that?
And that's based on what we're paying out this year, so there must be no reason this year going forward to next year. Anything else?
Any other questions for Lauren at this point?
Yeah, so if you would hit that last slide again, please, on the retro again. And this is for what now? Last year's, the 17, 18 budget include retro payments and transportation lines, and those are no longer there because we don't have to budget for retro this year. So my budget is a straight line on actual salaries being paid, and they increase because of the contractual increases, but go down because we don't have to pay, we don't have the budget for any retro payments anymore. And that was just transportation? The other ones are washed all into the salaries. This one is the only one that really showed in luggage. And the next board meeting is March 19th, and I'll have my whole budget presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Correspondence, we received a letter from Rorden Hart stating his support for our current interim superintendent, Kimberly Bell. The letter reads, "Good morning. I want to offer my strong and unequivocal support for Kimberly Bell as Truementsburg School District Superintendent. I believe that you have made an inspired choice last year by appointing her on an interim basis, and I believe that she has more than proven her abilities, dedication and commitment to the role in the time since. As a Truementsburg graduate and member of the community ever since, I have seen school administration come and go. While superintendents over the past two decades have performed adequately, not since the days of John Delaney, has anyone demonstrated the level of enthusiasm, personal investment in and excitement for the important role they play in the lives of our staff, educators, students and the community at large. The way Kimberly has embraced her responsibilities as superintendent is proof of the kind of commitment that the district needs and that our teachers and children deserve. John F. Kennedy famously said, quote, "When it is not necessary to change, it is necessary not to change." As you deliberate whether or not to open another time-consuming search for a superintendent, please consider the woman you placed in this role." please consider that woman you placed in this role the last year has proven on a daily basis to be the very best person for the job, the school and the community. Kimberly Bell deserves to be allowed to flourish as superintendent, and in so doing, shepherd the Truementsburg Central School District with its story passed into a bright future. Thank you all for your time, service and commitment to the Truementsburg School District." So we thank Gordon for sharing his opinion with us. Okay. Committee reports, Policy Committee. Motion for the second reading and adoption of board policy, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education for the Truementsburg Central School District hereby approves the second reading and the adoption of board policies title seven-five-five-zero, Dignity for All Students, and fifty-six-seventy, Records Management. We have a motion, please. Second discussion, questions to our Policy Committee members? Hearing none, those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Policies are accepted as presented. CSE and CPSE Committee report?
No, we attended last month, so I can speak a little bit about what we've reviewed. Angie's putting together trainings for support staff and for bus drivers. She's back! And, you know, just around behaviors, you know, how to maintain and support behaviors for students, as well as some self-care. I believe the trainings that you provided for support staff and bus drivers. District-wide protocols for consistency within mental health for each building, something that you've looked at, and CSE process. Oh, let's see, I have Learning Alley. You've, we've got some, it's a program that supports audiobooks for free for our students and for our parents, which is wonderful what you've done now. Wheelchair evacuation drills, so to do the regular bus driver drills, but also in the event emergency with a wheelchair on the bus, you know, that we're preparing for that, which I think is, it's wonderful. One-to-one aid usage, kind of always that, you know, always that, that cost point, are we gonna have, are we gonna spend money for the aid and are we also going to, is it the best for the student? So looking at that usage, I think is very important, always. And the last thing I have is billing and maximizing aid for our special ed students, both with staff and with, with our Medicaid billing, so.
I think you covered it. We did spend, so we spent the bulk of our meeting, I think, talking about trainings that have happened with staff in the districts. I think you covered it. The one we didn't mention was that switch to computer-based testing. We really spent quite a bit of time, or maybe I was out there for one second when you talked about that. We spent quite a bit of time talking with staff about accommodations and preparing kids in the classroom, especially our kids with disabilities for that computer-based testing that's coming up for three A exams. Other than that, we really tried to, like you said, touch on support staff quite a bit. Typically, they don't get as much training, and so that's really an area that I'd like to grow in the next couple of years, is providing our frontline, the people that are with their kids all day, additional trainings.
Remind me, I think there was a piece that you talked about Truementsburg is the only school that you know of that's doing some sort of, was it the wheelchair training? The evacuation?
I think so. Yep.
Was that the piece?
So that was that when we came in. TST said we're the only district in the area that's doing specific wheelchair evacuation with our drivers and monitors. So we just started that this year. I can't take credit for the idea. Certainly came from transportation, but it was a combined effort. I think we're feeling more comfortable that we looped in families into that evacuation training, our actual students who are wheelchair-bound and their families, so.
So can I ask, two things. On the wheelchair thing, you're saying it's for the monitors, drivers, and you're gonna include the families in on it too?
We already did, yeah.
Already did, awesome. And before you said the wheelchair training, what was the one right before the wheelchair training?
Learning Alley.
Learning Alley is sort of like the old bookshare.org, but much improved. It's an, it was purchased through TST BOSI, so we have access to it. We're using it in all three buildings, both our Gen Ed and our special ed teachers. It's online books that are read to students. And we found that it's had literally almost every textbook we use, every book that we're using in the classroom is on there as an audio version. It's an app, so parents can use it at home as well. Teachers can add books to the kids' library. It's a human reader instead of a computer voice. It's a really nice accommodation or tool for kids who are struggling to read and keep up with the curriculum.
If I could just interject and certainly appreciate your participation, but another question I would, we would prefer as a board that you wait until the end for open forum so that we don't lose control of the meeting and that we're not suddenly saying, oh, your question is acceptable, but yours isn't, or we're not answering that. So we're more than delighted to have the question if you would, and that's exactly why we put open forum at the end, because we know that there are questions that come up during the presentation. So thank you. Thank you to everyone. Any other questions for our committee members? Douglas, BOSI's or?
Stanford, unfortunately.
We do have, however, a quick report, which I'll send to Tina, and Tina, if you could duplicate things, on Groton's new tech facility, which is pretty amazing. And Kimberly, I think, can probably update us on quite a bit of that because I believe you're involved in several ways there.
I just saw the presentation, and it's an opportunity for our students starting this fall that they can actually go to Groton and experience. And I forget if you have the name of it, there's a list, I think it's the STEM.
The STEAM Learning Center. And then I also have the curriculum, basically, and how it's broken down. And if possible, Tina, lots of papers, but I think it's something sufficiently important that we might want to take a look at it. The bus trip is gonna be something else, but aside from that, it just sounds like an absolutely marvelous, marvelous program. They have things broken into four categories, basically. And they'll have instructors in each, and kids should come out of it ready to go. It's very, the building itself just looks heavenly. It's amazing. It's exactly like what Macton was using in Syracuse, almost identical. Rooms that are easily transferable, I mean, you can move equipment in, move equipment out, wide hallways, wide doors, and just start moving all the time. It's pretty exciting. And they are over the moon, of course.
So, I'm sorry, I just don't understand how, I would love to look at the materials, I just don't understand that they're offering it to the, all of the districts?
I think we will start with a, yeah, with a limited number of kids from each district, I assume.
I think there's a presentation for counselors and for the principals, right, John?
So it, what they're, they're sort of replicating with sort of what BOSI's does with Career and Tech. They're creating a handful of Career and Tech options that kids could take if we wanted to bus kids to Groton for a half-day program. So it is very similar to what BOSI's is doing. There's a tuition that'll go along with it, but, but they, but they want, so they created things like the Construction Trades Program that BOSI's used to run, but then no more, no longer runs because they didn't have enough student interest. But Groton has, I guess they had a significant student interest locally. So they created with a capital project this really nice facility that's gonna offer, I believe one is a computer.
Computer science, including discoveries, project lead the way, that sort of thing.
So they've got, they're offering these four specific programs that sound really pretty cool and innovative. The space is beautiful. I saw, I saw the digital tour that they had put together. It's the kind of thing that I think we'd be more interested in if they weren't an hour away from us.
Exactly, that's what concerns me.
And we did discuss that in our principals meeting, that South Seneca and Truementsburg probably would not be districts that will be real interested in it. But I'm, I'm interested in what they're doing and how they're approaching it because it's, it's interesting as we move into a capital project, the flexibility of the space, creating STEM opportunities for kids, these are the kinds of things that we are having conversations locally about.
The other two are Engineering, Electronics and Communication and Media Arts. And it sounds very exciting. Needless to say, they are really excited about it. Groton is...
It's, it is, it's a neat idea. I, I look at it with a little bit of trepidation because I think they are really trying to replicate what BOSI's does with their CTE programs, but, but on a, just on a smaller scale. They're just, they're, they're creating their own CTE programs because they are CTE certified. That's part of their goal with, this was to be CTE certified.
But if we were to send students there, we wouldn't generate aid? Who wouldn't get more aid for the student treatment?
Right, right. Correct.
I think this probably, I'm, I'm sorry, I should have had copies made earlier, but we'll make it more.
I think their idea is to, to meet the needs of Groton students, but it's really creative and there will be space available for kids from other districts to join them. So if it's within reason and transportation isn't a problem, they would, I think they're welcoming students from other districts to sort of fill in the, the open seats.
I believe as far as BOSI's is concerned, that is part of the program, including students from other districts.
Yes.
I'm not, I don't know, I mean, maybe a hundred percent certain on the aid piece, I'm not sure, because it is a shared service with multiple districts, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how it was.
And this is integrated throughout the school year?
Yes.
Actually, it's through more than one school a year. They have a complete curriculum for, what is it, three or four? Three years, two years? Just two?
I don't know.
But it's pretty impressive. So if this were something that perhaps offered during the summer, would we be more than willing to take advantage of it? I have not heard that addressed.
Well, I'm sorry.
The space wouldn't have been available until the fall?
Right. But in the future, whether or not they would make it available in the summer. Oh, that would address our issues with...
Yeah, if there were a summer program or something that kids could participate in. I'm interested in it in the sense of looking at the way they're doing the space and the creative STEM programming, honestly. You know, our, a lot of the conversations that we're having internally are how do we create flexibility for our kids to offer more diverse programs in a way that doesn't, because my, well, I'll leave it at that. We're looking at similar STEM kinds of opportunities for our kids. I could talk for an hour if you'd love me.
We'll invite you to do so at a later date.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Any other questions for Douglas?
And then I also have the RITIMs handout, which I will give to you as well, and then we can be all of a mind when we talk with our legislators. And that presentation went very well, despite the weather. Was a well-attended, well-received. Barbara Lipton was the only legislator we had there, however.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on to Administrator's Report. Superintendent will chat with us about a proposed capital project.
So I'm very excited to say that we have a large team here at the district, which also includes plant architects. There is a mailing that went out, I believe, in this afternoon's mail, not this afternoon, it's in tomorrow's mail, to all the members of our community. And not to read this to you, but it's really just highlighting the most important information. The referendum is on March thirteenth from noon to eight P.M. at Ulysses Historical Society. We will have some informational meetings. The first one is scheduled for Monday, February twenty-sixth, six P.M., right here in the high school library. And then a second meeting on Monday, March fifth, at five-thirty, again, here in the high school library. At those meetings, the first one will have Hunt here to answer questions about scope. There'll be large photos of what we do, we will do in the spaces inside this brochure. We won't read them all to you. It's the highlights of what we intend to do at each building. And for those of you that aren't aware, remember that this capital project is being proposed because it includes many of the health and safety items that were part of our building condition survey. And then in addition to that, in each of our three buildings, a new STEM space. We just talked a little bit about STEM, so for those of you that were listening, some of those innovative ideas around programming, open spaces, the best technology for our students. And then most importantly, how does this impact our community? The financial impact at this point, we predict that there will be no additional tax impact. The project is being funded by eighty-two percent state aid, and the remaining funds come from our capital reserve as well as our debt service fund. So we move this project forward because we feel that it's responsible, it takes care of some of the health and safety items, as I mentioned, but also there is a program component that will make instruction better for our students and our teachers. And one of the pages in this brochure, the final page, is questions and answers that have come up frequently. And so we've taken the opportunity to present those questions as well as the answers to our community, but we invite anyone that is interested in the project to come out on those dates and just be a part of that public conversation, give us your feedback.
Any questions for, for Kimberly? Should we make the disclaimer that despite our best efforts and those of our crack proofreaders, there are some mistakes in the printed word here?
Yes, yes. I can't tell you how many edits this went through. This team can speak to that. Last week, the hours that went into both crafting this and checking and rechecking, and it is just true, you cannot find your own mistakes. And Maureen, you are the next person we will ask to check this because I know you're gonna find it.
Well, I emailed you about it. I emailed you this morning.
Oh, you did? Oh, darn, well, it's already been printed.
I emailed, that's what I asked you, if it went to print or if it stopped.
Which is most unfortunate, and it's just proof that you cannot find your own errors. So thank you to Diane and Joanne who sat here and also found some errors, and it is very embarrassing because we are an educational facility and that should not be happening, but, next time.
Take this all an opportunity to point out how superior we are.
We'll take those extra I's any time.
Yeah, thank you. John, would you like to fill in for Student Report?
Yeah, Grace is at a rehearsal.
Right.
It's the musical season and show is down to a month away. The biggest announcement, one to share is that Wednesday evening is the annual Jazz Cabaret fundraiser for the Music Boosters, which will be in the gymnasium here Wednesday evening. I believe it starts at seven, and that is an awesome opportunity to see the talents of our great music students. The musical is coming up shortly in March. I don't have the dates off the top of my head, but I can probably think of them in my calendar moment, but. Fall sports are wrapping up this evening.
Winter, winter sports are wrapping up this evening.
Track team has state qualifiers this coming weekend. We have a number of kids that'll be participating in that, the qualified, and then state championships will be later in the month. And then spring sports start March fifth. So that's, that's the Student Report. Those are the key components.
Any questions for the Student Report Recorder?
What, how much, what is the admission price for the Jazz Cabaret? Seven for adults, five for students?
It's saved, thank you. I just goat smile.
You don't have to pay?
No, I pay. I have a scene you're performing at, so.
Moving on to the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that members would like to pull for individual consideration? Hearing none, those in favor of exceptions?
Sarah will move it, I'll second it.
Okay. Motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented. Okay, those in favor. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, thank you. Under New Business, we have a motion for approval of a field trip request, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. The Board of Education for the Truementsburg Central School District hereby approves a field trip request for the Robotics Club to Utica, New York, from March first to fourth, two thousand and eighteen, for a robotics competition as presented, with the notation as Maureen shared with us, that some of the information needs to be updated in terms of dates that was sent along with this request.
Second?
Any discussion or questions? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't... I'm sorry. We don't want to hear that.
I just had a question about this field trip. So this is outside of school, and is this under teacher supervision or a parent is doing the robotics?
So a robotics advisor is a parent who has been fingerprinted and cleared and appointed by the board to serve as the advisor for the group, and there's a handful of other volunteers. There's a primary advisor and then an assistant advisor that are paid positions through the district, and they are all cleared and fingerprinted, but they're both parent advisors.
And how many students are there that are going?
I'm going to say 12-ish. I'd have to look at the roster, but it's about 10 to 12 kids that are involved, maybe more.
My understanding, we've been invited down to the cafeteria in between the end of this regular meeting and executive session?
That's correct.
To view the robotics? So that'd be a question that you could ask the advisors at that time?
That sounds great.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We have a motion for approval of a field trip request, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education for the Truementsburg Central School District hereby approves... We should have taken these together. I'm sorry. Approves a field trip request for robotics club to Rochester on Route 14th to 17th for robotics competition.
So move it. Second.
Questions or concerns on this field trip? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. A motion that based upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education for the Truementsburg Central School District hereby establishes the rate for use of school buses as $2.50 per mile for vehicle and gasoline or propane use for the 2017-18 school year. This rate is exclusive of the driver cost and may be applied when the activity provides a driver that is not paid by the district. Motion?
This is based on...
Second.
I'll second.
Second. Questions?
This is based on, the $2.50 is based on what?
It's a combination of... It's an estimate of the cost of the vehicle, which includes the cost of buses over time.
This is what it's been normally?
It's a... We didn't recalculate it totally, but it's based on a timeframe and its average for the other districts in the area.
So the purpose behind this is that we have groups like robotics, or let's say our seniors that want to take a class trip, and we often out expense them in terms of providing the transportation piece. So every year robotics, and I'll just use them because they tend to travel frequently, they need to get their group to Rochester, and they don't have a way to provide that travel in an approved fashion. So we say, well, parents can't just drive all those kids. You're part of a recognized group, so you need to take our school bus. But then when we would charge it out at the rate, which I believe is...
$5.50.
$5.50 per mile, if they're going any distance that far exceeds an expense that they can pay when their revenue is generated through fundraising. So it's obviously for our students. We want to support them when we can, so this is the district's way of being able to support those groups in their travel, including, you know, if it were a senior class trip, they too could tap into this. Separately, we would ask the organizations like robotics, sometimes they go to New York City, to pay the driver's salary by the hour, and they also pay for accommodations and meals. So it makes it very feasible for them to use our bus and then also compensate our drivers outside of the general fund.
Thank you. It's same names, yes.
That's the point.
Other questions? Hearing none. Those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. May have a motion for the approval to increase or create a project assistant job title, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby increases and creates the job title of project assistant at 160 hours for the 2017-18 school year. This position will be available only to current high school students and will not be eligible for insurance or leave that event.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Questions or discussion?
What if...
Mr. Kim?
So we're looking to create opportunities for students and opportunities to employ students to pick up some just interesting things around the building. Our first effort is to create a weight room supervisor. We have hours in the afternoon where students want to work out, but we don't have anybody to supervise the weight room, to open it up, to keep it unlocked, to keep it, you know, safe and supervised. We've done, my PE staff and I have done a lot of research to make sure that this is something that's safe and okay with our insurance company and will work, and we have found that this is a totally cool way to do it. It'll be great. It's going to take about 10 hours a week to have students that'll open the weight room up from 3:00 to 5:00, so that students that aren't necessarily part of a team but want to work out in the cardio room or in the weight room and lift can do so. We've put together a job description and a training protocol that the kids will go through to be able to do the job, and a whole set of job responsibilities. But it meets a need because we have lots of people that like to use our spaces, our weight room and cardio room, and including staff from other buildings who don't have keys and just want to come on over after work or after school to work out. So it meets a need. It also gives students a great first employment opportunity, and our hope is that this process, once, when we see that it works, we'll also be able to do things like hiring kids for other projects, maybe working in the copy room periodically, or, which is something that a lot of other districts do, is employ high school students for, you know, one hour a day to help cover the secretaries during their lunch hour and things like that.
I just have a couple of questions. Is it a maximum of 160 hours within a school year? Is that what it's saying?
So this initial effort is just talking about that first position of 10 hours a week for the rest of the year to do the weight room supervision. That's where we're starting. So that's that 160-hour limit. And I've scraped some money from the budget that will cover that because it's relatively minimal with it being a minimum wage job.
And is it multiple positions? I mean, it looks like we're approving one position, but if we have multiple students in that role, we have to, we'll have to probably approve each of those.
So...
This is for multiple? This is for multiple?
Yeah.
It's just to create the title.
So when we hire the kids to do the job, that's, you know, we'll have, they would be appointed to the job, but my, our goal is to try to find a handful of kids that'll each get two, three, four hours a week to be able to help out.
But we're covered by just this one? Okay.
We're creating the title, not the number of positions.
Well, that's the next, that's the next motion, I think. The one of the...
We said three.
The rate is the next motion.
I think it's a great opportunity for kids to have first learning experience in a professional setting, where it's trusted adults. It's just great all around. It's a win-win-win.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. May have a motion for entry-level salary, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby establishes the following hourly rate for our project assistant at $10.40 for the 17-18 school year.
So move it.
Second. Questions? Hearing none. Those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Great idea, John. And our final item under new business, may have a motion for the authorization for the superintendent of schools to sign a contract, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to sign a contract between Truementsburg Central School District and Michelle Mentor as an independent contractor for promotion of the healthcare objectives of the TST Bosie's Health Cooperative. This contract will be effective from June 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2018.
January.
January, I'm sorry. 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2018, and is valued at $1,500 as presented. Motion?
So move it.
Second?
Second.
Questions or discussions? What is the TST Healthcare Initiative or Cooperative?
We have a wellness committee and a wellness fund within the healthcare cooperative. We, as the district center involved in TST Bosie's, we are a curious group. So part of our wellness initiative is to hire one person to coordinate wellness activities throughout the districts, and then we still have additional funds that we can spend within the district outside of this wellness coordinator. But this is really one position that'll do services for everybody instead of us all having to struggle and find someone to do it for.
So we should hear at some point what initiatives this person has done.
Yes, initiatives are already started, and we can certainly pass on some of her ideas and news... I think she put out a newsletter already. I'll check, but yes, certainly will give you one.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions and concerns? Hearing none. Those in favor? Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. If the rest of the board has no objection, I'd sort of like to switch our next two items so that we do board forum first and then open forum after that, so that the discussion that we have for how to proceed with a superintendent search, if the audience has questions, then they have an opportunity to ask them afterwards. Okay. So board forum. Certainly one of the items mentioned and certainly others if you would like to raise them. So why don't we do this? If there are other issues or concerns that board members have under board forum, let's chat about those now, and then once those are taken care of, we can come back to our agenda item under this, and that's how to proceed with our superintendent search. So do members have other questions or concerns or things that, thoughts they'd like to share under board forum other than that? Douglas?
You're asking for...
I'm just asking, are there other topics besides the superintendent search that anyone would like to discuss or comment on? Okay. So as we had shared with the public over the course of the last two board meetings, that we would use this opportunity to come to a decision as a board in terms of how we wanted to proceed for a search for a superintendent. So I would open it up for, from the board members to express their opinions and thoughts on how we want to do that and go from there. Whoever would like to start us off, please do so. All right? We can start if we have to. Douglas? As our most experienced member?
Yes. I just feel that Kimberly could not be any more perfectly situated for us. Her experience in communities is universal. I mean, she's been at South Seneca, she's taught at Bosie, she knows all of the players in the game. Her kids have gone to local schools, and she herself is quite the professional. I think we're being very well-served by her. I've never met anyone who is as nonplussed by unpleasant situations. I guess is the best way of putting it, and she is. It takes quite a bit to rattle her. She certainly had an interesting beginning to the year and survived that, and I just think she's ideal, and everyone in the community that I have spoken with is highly in favor of our thinking whatever has as a superintendent.
So we set a timeline, and this is the time in which we get to say what we feel about searching for a superintendent, and I think we've done it. I don't think we have to search any farther. We know Kimberly, which she's proven to be under the gun, able to handle critical situations with such grace and command, that I am really impressed over and over again with your ability. Abe Lincoln said, "The best way to predict the future is to create it," and I think we've done that by offering Kimberly the opportunity to create our future. We're a good school, we're going to make it better. Thank you.
Any thoughts on how we should proceed?
I think we've given her the longest job interview that she's ever had. So it's about time. It's about time that we could just simply say, "Kimberly, thank you for what you've done," and we hope that you would be willing to sort of hit your star with ours and to continue.
Michelle, I've seen you.
Yeah, sure. There you go. Yeah, good question. You know, I have, for this, I completely agree. It's the longest interview ever. I think you've had quite a year, and through all of the gathering of community input and folks who've written to us, folks who we've spoken to, you know, and just the evaluation process for you, it's just flying colors. I mean, it just truly is only good, only good stuff that you're doing, that you're providing for the community and the parents. You know, I see you at concerts and, you know, the play, and it's just, you just have a presence that I think has just been so needed in this community. Just, you're there. You show up, and I think we've only heard good things about you from the community and from what we've seen and know from being on the board. I think we're very lucky to have you.
Joanne?
I think that the initiatives that you've brought on since you started as the superintendent has been fantastic. As a parent, I am a very happy parent. It just shows the work that you're putting towards, you know, getting our kids the education that they need to continue in this very fast-paced world, and I don't really think that we need to search for another or go on a search for a superintendent. I think she's definitely shown her professionalism with us, definitely for me, a first year on this board. It's been, you know, just the time that you've spent with me and learned those things because I, you know, do not have the experience that some people here have to know a lot of these school terms, and your patience has been appreciated. So I agree, I don't think we need to search for another person.
I agree with what everybody just said. I want to add a couple of things about how, if you haven't gotten the feeling yet from Kimberly, she does have an open-door policy, so very approachable via email, phone call, all of those things. So in lieu of a suggestion that was made earlier in open forum about having a presentation by Kimberly to invite people, there are coffee breaks that are made or that you can sign up for that are, where can people find those if they want to sign up to speak with you?
The last one was just canceled because of weather, so Tina will be putting out an invite for another one.
March 1st. March 1st. So that's something that people can sign up for, and if that isn't good for your work schedule or your family schedule, she's willing to meet. I'm speaking on her behalf because I know it's true. She's willing to meet with anybody who wants to speak with her, so. So yeah, I agree with, like I said, I agree with what everybody said. You're very lucky.
I'll add my two cents, although it's just going to echo that. I think one of the really important things that the board has done in this year is both establish an evaluation process, but also... is both establish an evaluation process, but also as part of that evaluation process to make sure that we had input from the entire administrative team. And in that regard, we spoke with each of the administrative team members this past fall and actually early December to ask them their impressions and to evaluate Kimberly as their superintendent. And I would maybe invite John, if he's comfortable, to, to speak to that, but we had planned out probably about 20 minutes apiece for each person and just asked the administrators what they saw as strengths, areas of improvement, overall leadership, thinking that that would be a pretty tight schedule and that. But it turned out to be quite the opposite because by the time people got done with the strengths, which took an inordinate amount of time in terms of what we saw as that 20-minute block, there was virtually no concerns or areas that they felt could be improved or strengthened. And the, the answer to the question of overall leadership style was a repeat of the, of the first question. And so we moved through pretty rapidly and at one point we were asking the people towards the end of the schedule, "Could you come in early, please, so that we could talk to you and not sit here for the next 45 minutes until your scheduled time?" So the input from that group was universally and unanimously and overwhelmingly supportive. So I would just echo, the reason I think to go out for a search would be to fill a need and from my perspective, I can't see what need we would be filling in searching for someone else. I've worked with Kimberly for over two decades in all of her roles, including being her college internship supervisor. So I've just inordinately impressed with her ability. I think she's proven that in terms of being able to settle labor contracts this past summer in her decision to help guide the board to a capital project that would meet our needs, but not overextend the district either financially or commit us to a direction that we're uncertain of without having a true vision of where this district is gonna go over the course of the next 15 years or 10 years. And I think that kind of prudent decision-making is exactly what the, the district needs and I think she's a person that is 100% committed to serving the district and making it this a customer-oriented district and, and not only herself, but her entire team and staff in the district and one that is 100% committed to kids. So I personally see no reason for us to, to go forward with any type of search and would invite, well, I won't because that'll put them on the spot, but I, I would make a motion then that as a board that we enter into contract discussions with Kimberly with the intent of securing her as our permanent superintendent. Second?
Second.
Questions?
I'll second.
Okay. So those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. So unanimously we'll move forward to do that.
Thank you, everyone. Very appreciative and I look forward to the opportunity to serve this district and I have to say, phew, without getting emotional, that's a little tough to sit through, that it's really, this work is representative of an amazing administrative team, so thank you.
Great. Okay. Open forum, we'll quick change this. At this time, we'd like to give district residents an opportunity to ask any questions about this agenda or about operations within the school district. Personnel matters will not be addressed in public session. Comments may be recorded and responded to by the Board of Education or the superintendent within 24 to 48 hours. We ask that you introduce yourself to the board and you keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Anthony Ochama, 649 Waterburg Road, New York, also an employee of the district. I came here tonight also to make sure that I spoke up and could echo the sentiments that we just spoke about, Mrs. Bell, in terms of how she's led the district and completely satisfied and excited and the, and my only caveat is like I applaud the board for last year gathering community and input and teacher input and thought think that is extremely important part of the search because I think that that led us to Kimberly, to our, to internal, I think the, the response was that we wanted our internal candidates considered as well. So my only concern is like, is the, is not, is to, is to not again, at least have the opportunity to gather some community or at least teacher input as well. To, and again, I think to, a little bit in terms of setting a precedent for, for the board, board appointing without, without considering community input. So I, again, completely support Mrs. Bell and hope that we certainly go in that direction, but I'm wondering if, is there a way or how do we, is there a way to, to gather input, not just from the administrators, which is extremely important, but also the teachers to get the feedback in, and community saying that Mrs. Bell has our complete support and well, we, we still value your input, is my, is my only, I guess I got a lot of shit.
Absolutely.
I think last year we had a plethora of response regarding our superintendent search. Kimberly's been with us for about seven years and if we don't know pretty much everything to know about her at this point in time, then the only thing I haven't asked her is if she likes chocolate and the answer should be yes. However, at this point, I have no concerns whatsoever about setting a precedent to find somebody who is so qualified and somebody that we know so well and that the community knows well, that I think it's much more efficient for us to be able to simply say, "Kimberly, thank you." And if you're willing to take, to be our superintendent, then that's what we have in mind. So is that absolute? Perhaps some of your concerns?
No, again, I have no concerns with Kimberly. I am excited, I actually came to speak and say, "Kimberly, I didn't know where, I didn't know where the..."
Why would you spend the time to be able, because we've already gotten that kind of feedback. We've spent a fair amount of time asking people for input and the input that we have gotten has been overwhelmingly, are you guys nuts? Why would you look for somebody else?
I guess, again, my, my just concern was if, if we had chosen last year, would you have appointed somebody else without, without input? That's, is my only concern.
Perhaps it would be a time for others in the community and on the staff to get to know Kimberly as well as the board has gotten to know, you know, there's different roles. I like that idea of that question and answer session, a little bit about my background. I think it's a time to, for interaction, for questions and answers and getting to know each other.
And I think, I just think as time allows too, that that's, I mean, I just, the other day was at the coffee shop in the middle of the day and I came back and I said to Tina, "That's where I need to spend time." Like I just need to pencil that in, I need to create opportunities within my day to be out, outside of these buildings too. And I think that unfortunately with all the events that have happened this fall and with all the reporting that takes place through state ed, I have not been able to be in buildings as much as I would like to. So I say that on a weekly basis, but I do intend to be there more as some of this dust settles. I've had a lot of feedback individually from individuals within the community that are very supportive. I do have 24 years in education. I hold certification as a superintendent, a business official, a building principal, which has now expired because I didn't use it, and a school counselor. So I have worked for 12 years at BOSI's. I worked with special education students. I worked at South Seneca as a middle school principal and then I took on the ninth grade as well. I worked there doing budgeting. So I think my experience has been quite vast. I do have a very open door policy. Ask Deb Peffey, she emails me at 10:00 PM at night and I answer her. So, I mean, I, I'm available if I can be. I often drop everything if someone just surfaces because I recognize that their time is also limited. I can do emails after work, I can make phone calls after work, I've called parents on weekends. So, you know, I'm definitely putting in the time, I'm trying to make the face contact and I'm happy to continue to do that. I think that makes this district better. This isn't just about me though, as I said, this is a very strong leadership team. We do our work together and I'm good because of them, so.
I think the other, just because you asked a question, Anthony, not directed at you, but in general, because Maureen brought it up earlier, I think Maureen had mentioned that this would be precedent-setting and reference how Paula Hurley, because she was the only candidate, went through a, a public forum and that. I, I think there's two really notable distinctions. One is that Paula was a high school principal and, and no one knew anything about what her experience might be or her, her thoughts, philosophy, vision for the district as a superintendent and therefore I think it was probably far more incumbent upon the board at that time to, to make sure that that was expressed. I think the other thing is, as has been mentioned, this has been probably the longest job interview process that has existed. So there's, we, I'll speak for myself. I, I feel as board president that there's been ample opportunity for people to express opinions, to address issues either with Kimberly or with the board. And over the course, certainly of the last month and a half, I think we've made it abundantly clear that the end of January was our time to make a decision and we repeatedly asked for input. So I hope that we have received that. Certainly the board feels that the input and the feedback that they've received over the past eight months, eight or nine months has led us to believe as strongly as we do that no matter how far and wide the search would be, that we would absolutely end up with the same decision and that it would be the very best decision for the district. So, but, but thank you for asking the question. I think the question in terms of process is important.
Okay. And that was, again, I complete support, I'm the guy that, that sounds like we're going, that we're going in this direction. I think Mrs. Bell has fantastic leadership. I just wanted to make sure that it was, that that process was in the right way and forgive me for not knowing the process so that there weren't grumblings once we, once we, that we had.
Great, thank you. Deanna?
And I think when you say the process, because there has been a lot of questions throughout the, the buildings of when is the process gonna start? Because it's gonna have started by now, when is the process gonna start? And, and when she says open door, I don't know how many times I've popped in there to go mail out letters, "Oh, you got a minute?" You know, it, it is open door. I have popped in so many times from just to crack the joke to ask something, "I'm gonna be there five minutes" and I end up there 45 minutes. So it, it has been awesome and I totally appreciate that and sometimes I leave Starburst down her, you know, handle because of some things she's, you know, helped me out with. But people have asked about the process and because there's always been a new process. So, you know, you, you're making this decision, but as far as like in the coffee hour is great, but not everybody can go to coffee hour. Not everybody knows your, your history, you know, and so an open forum for every, you to be able to stand up there and everybody, "Hey, this is who I am," and to be able to, and all parents could come and just, "Here she is." I mean, it, it's been so great. You come down the hall, "Hey, good morning." It is so nice to see that because we haven't seen that for a number of years. You know, we used to crack jokes about, you know, there's Mr. Delaney with his orange gloves out directing traffic, but everybody knew who he was. You know, it was the joke about the orange gloves, but everybody knew who he was. I mean, I could run into him now, he wouldn't know my name, but he would know that I worked in the district. And, and so it's great that you're getting out and I've heard the great comments about, you know, one of the big things you've had to deal with this year, how professionally you've dealt with it, you know, so, but just to be able to, even if it's auditorium and open forum, let's meet the new superintendent.
Well, that might be a great idea that the board can have a night to present our new superintendent and ask questions and that, so that's, that's something we'll certainly take under strong consideration. I think that would be a great idea.
People are, have been asking, "When is the process starting?" You know, "Gonna have started by now?" And, you know, I mean, that, you know, in a school district, there's lots of room where there's lots of things that go around, yeah, good or bad, it's there. Yeah.
I just want to say that it's hard for volunteers to, this is our access point for the public and, and staff and things like that. So the board meetings are, if you want our ear, this is, this is where to get it, or email the president, so.
John?
I will speak both as an administrator, as a resident in the community, a taxpayer, a parent of two students in the district, and as a representative of the administrative team. Your decision is absolutely, without a doubt, the right decision. As the other internal candidate, I will also say, "Your decision is the right decision." Honestly, with everything that we've dealt with this year, we've, we have really thrown a ton of stuff at our interim superintendent and our new, our new superintendent. And time and again, I have said to myself and to my wife and to my team that this is, I'm really glad that this decision was made because I feel like everybody is where they need to be. Our, our team has become, has been more unified as an administrative team than we have been in a long time. We have clarity of purpose that we have needed and we have felt trusted as administrators to make the difficult decisions and knowing that we have a superintendent who has our back and helps support us when things have been difficult, when things have been fun. And so I will state unequivocally that I am thrilled by your decision and really appreciate it and look forward to the next few years. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Hearing none, may have a motion to adjourn to executive session for?
For the quick stop to robotics.
Oh, with a quick stop to robotics, yes, but matter relating to dismissal, removal of particular person or persons. So, second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. You're officially adjourned. Thank you very much.